Okay, I would ask that if something gets wonky, just shoot me a text and I will manage it on my end. If I see that you're muting yourself, I'm going to send you a request to unmute yourself. And when you're ready, you can just come back online, okay?
Yes.
All right, let me bring folks in. Okay, everyone, so welcome everyone to the Friday, March 20th special council meeting. I want to start by thanking everyone for their coordinated efforts in joining us at unprecedented times. Going to go ahead and go through the agenda as quickly as possible and then open it up to my colleagues for any questions. Madam Clerk, can you call the role, please?
Counselor King. Counselor Crowell.
Present.
Counselor Devana.
Present.
Counselor Harris. Counselor Mahoney.
Present.
Counselor McCaffrey.
Present.
Counselor Peltz.
Virtually present.
Counselor Phelan.
Present.
President Liang.
Present.
Nine members who have a quorum.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, can you read the open meeting law, please?
To the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised to touch recordings or transmissions that be made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and that deemed acknowledged and permissible.
Thank you. And in accordance with Governor Charles D. Baker's March 10th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 30a, section 20, the Quincy City Council is holding this special meeting via remote conferencing services and is being aired on Quincy Access Television, QATV, channel QATV 9, government access. We will also be recording this and posting it on QATV afterwards as well. Madam Clerk, first and only item on the agenda, please.
2020-069, an appropriation for $500,000 from snow and ice to other public safety for costs related to preventing and treating COVID-19.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And I'm going to go ahead and put it over to Chris Walker, the mayor's chief of staff, to just review this and then I will open it up to my colleagues for questions. Chris?
Thank you, Madam President. First, on behalf of the mayor, I want to thank you personally. I know we've been talking two to three times a day. I've been talking with a number of the other councils on a regular basis. He wants to thank you all for your partnership and all of your work this last couple of weeks, specifically this week. And thank you very much for calling this meeting to consider this appropriation transfer from snow and ice to a COVID-19 response fund. As I mentioned in the memo, we view this as a starting point. This is a first allocation and we view that first allocation as sort of a contingency for potential costs that really probably haven't revealed themselves yet. We don't know what we don't know. And as you all well know, at this point, the situation is evolving by the hour. So this will give us a small measure of flexibility to deal with issues as they arise. That being said, we do have a number of items that at least we're pretty certain on or potentially that will happen in the coming weeks. The first, and which is one we will absolutely be moving on as soon as the appropriation request, if approved, is finalized, and that's personal protective equipment for our first responders. As you all well know, there is a dramatic crisis level shortage of this equipment across the country right now. We traditionally have worked through our partners at the federal and state government to get these supplies. We have received some over the course of the last week, but not nearly enough to maintain a sustainable, a sustainable amount for our first responders and our public health nurses as well. In procuring those on our own, what we will do is procure a set of these suits that are reusable. So they'll be able to be disinfected and then reused again by our first responders. Doing some research on this, our team has found that these kinds of suits are a little bit more available out there on the open market right now than the temporary ones that you've seen so much about. So that is an absolute definite that will be part of this appropriation. The other item, which is still a potential at this point, but we want, we think it has some solid basis in reality at this point, and that is the infrastructure we would need for a mobile testing site at a facility in Quincy. The mayor is committed to funding the tent. Whatever other needs would be required for that mobile testing facility, we're working with Manic Community Health and our other provider partners on fleshing that out. Obviously, there's a lot that goes into that. It's ultimately not the city's calls to whether or not there would be one here. Obviously, it wouldn't be operated by the city. It gets into the larger argument about, the city can really provide the infrastructure on a wide array of things, a wide array of responses, but it's the staffing and the equipment that has to come from our providers, our partners, or the federal or state government before a lot of these people work. The other issue, potential, which is an obvious one, and that's overtime for our public health nurses and anyone else that is actively engaged in the frontline of this crisis. We're starting to see those costs starting to mount now. We expect that only to continue at least for the next several weeks, if not longer. As I mentioned in the memo, we do have certain authority, as it is an emergency, to deficit spend in certain accounts. So we do have a little bit of flexibility, but the mayor really felt it was important to bring this to you, bring this to the body, Madam President, so we can show that the city is, and all of its leaders, are working together and doing what we can to make sure we're doing everything possible to respond to this crisis. With that, I would certainly open it up to questions.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, so to my colleagues, I can see you on the screens. I would ask that if you have a question, if you could just raise your hand and I'll just make a note here. Counselor Peltz?
Raise the hand and say.
Okay, Counselor Peltz, we'll go to you first, and then to Counselor Kane, and then to Counselor Mahoney.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. Chris, can you just update us on the use of Quincy Hospital, Quincy Medical Center?
We've had a number of discussions with the property owner. The property owner is absolutely willing to allow the property to be used for whatever purpose may suit the city and the state and perhaps the federal government. What we get into here is a larger discussion relative to what the needs are of the city and its partners. We can provide beds, and there are other places. If we get to the point where we need a satellite hospital or something like that, the beds and the infrastructure are not going to be the issue. The issue is going to be who's going to work there? Where are the nurses? Where are the doctors? Where is the equipment going to come from? And I think that's something that the, our larger partners, the Brigham and Women's, the South Shores, the BIDs, I think that's something they're still working through. But we've had some initial discussions. We've made it abundantly clear that we're willing to do our part to get something running up there now and again. When you speak specifically of Quincy Medical, you're also talking about a substantial capital investment. The building has been mothballed for five years. The utilities in the building are defunct. It is not a functioning facility. This is not, as we've seen a little bit on social media, not something where we can walk up there tomorrow, put a key in the door, open it up, and voila, we have a functioning hospital. It's nothing even remotely close to that. That being said, it doesn't make it impossible. Our sort of vision would be, if it gets to that point, this is something the Army Corps of Engineers or something along those lines that could come in in a fairly short amount of time, invest a substantial amount of man-hours and money into it and get it going. But we would have other options as well. Eastern Azurine College has dormitories that they have expressed an interest in potentially providing some assistance on, if that, if that opportunity avails itself. But again, it's, it's, it's not a question of providing the beds. I'd be as blunt as to say that the mayor, if given the opportunity, we could build, I've seen, we saw it in Washington State, we would be happy to build a tent, a field hospital. We can do that. We can build stuff. What we can't do is provide the ventilators, the doctors, and the nurses. And I think that's the larger issue here, Counselor.
Okay. Well, thank you. I appreciate that. I think I've gotten a lot of questions about it. I'm sure my colleagues have as well. A couple of the questions, the money that we're being asked to appropriate today, you indicated protective equipment, obviously, first and foremost for our first responders is on the list. I don't know if you've said it or if I'm just assuming overtime for staff that needs to be working. What other types of uses will be, will this money be for? I think we, you know, the food pantries are in kind of dire straits and those senior services, seniors are requiring more services. What other type of, what other type of use do you envision for this money?
Sure. Through you, Madam President. We've discussed, as I mentioned earlier, the infrastructure necessary for any sort of field operation that would come in. That would be one thing. The food pantries are certainly part of the discussion right now. We know they're at crisis level. Providing for our seniors is certainly another avenue that we're going to pursue, that we're open to pursuing. But again, I hesitate to get too deep into the weeds on it because something could happen literally when we get off this meeting that would then trigger our desire to use some of this appropriation for specific purposes.
Yeah, I mean, I'm like, I'm not looking to hold your feet to the fire that, you know, you have $500,000, you know what you're going to use it for. I just, just kind of a general sense what you guys had in mind as of now. So it's mostly overtime, protective equipment, and whatever we need and as it comes?
Yep.
Okay. All right. And lastly, I'm sure my colleagues have other questions. I don't want to hog up the time here. But lastly, just in terms of the services that we're offering to seniors, I'd ask you, you just give a rundown of what services are available now. And I know you and I have talked outside the meeting and I've let you know that I've gotten calls from seniors who are, obviously, they're, they're in a particularly vulnerable community. The older members of our community as it relates to the COVID-19. But also some of the side effects of, you know, the shutdowns, like as we discussed yesterday, MBTA service being curtailed and scaled back. I got a call from a senior who said the boss isn't running anymore that she relies upon to get her prescriptions. You know, how is she going to get her prescriptions? Can you just talk a little bit more about what senior services are available now? What we anticipate expanding to, if we do have an intention for that?
Sure. Through you, Madam President. The Kennedy Center, as announced earlier this week, is not open to the public for gathering. But the core function of the Kennedy Center and the Council on Aging is functioning. And that key component is the transportation service that we provide. There's been no drop-off, no curtailment in that, and we do not expect that to happen. In fact, we have been, based upon the discussions we've had, Counselor, looking at ways to expand that service as we continue to go through this crisis. So folks who are seniors, they maybe not have taken advantage of that service before. I would encourage them to call the Council on Aging if they have a medical appointment, if they have a specific place that they're going to pick up, that they need to go pick up their groceries. It's by appointment. We don't expect our regular appointments to lag during this time period, but we're certainly open to expanding that service going forward and any other concept that may come up. I know Mr. Klasby, the director, has been working on another avenues in terms of even specifically the social help of our seniors and how we keep them active while not being able to come to the senior center because that is a huge piece of what they do up there, is the socialization that's so very important. And a lot of folks are going to lose that. So he's been putting pen to paper and really thinking hard of, how do we, without doing it in the building, how do we continue or expand on that socialization aspect of this, which is so important to mental health?
And what about meals and food resources specifically for seniors and having that delivered?
I know they do run, we, the city of Quincy does not run itself a Meals on Wheels program, Counselor. I believe that is run through South Shore Elder Services. That program, I believe, is available. It's certainly something, if that's of interest in terms of exploring in greater detail, we would be happy to.
Okay. And I appreciate that. And we can talk more about that offline. And thank you. That's all I have for questions. I just wanted to thank you, Madam President, for putting this meeting together. I think it's important to show that even in times of, you know, public crisis, we have a functioning government. And we've always been and I know will continue to be through this crisis, a government that works together, the council and the mayor's office. I want to commend the mayor's office, Chris Walker, Mayor Coke, for the excellent job they've done so far. Have the utmost confidence in the mayor's leadership, especially in times of crisis like this. I think we're lucky to have someone who's been at the helm for 12 years, you know, and has the experience that other mayors, perhaps, in similar sized communities don't have. So I think the residents of Quincy are very lucky to have a functioning cooperatively working government. And obviously, wish everyone stays safe, families stay safe. Say a prayer for our first responders that they stay healthy as they're out there doing their job. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. We're going to go to Counselor Kane next, and then Counselor Mahoney and Counselor Crowell. Counselor Kane?
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, first, I do want to just thank the mayor, his team, Mr. Walker, his office, Ruth Jones, the health commissioner and her department for their work in this. The mayor has really set an even keeled tone during which, you know, this, this time where people's anxiety is on high and, you know, it's, it's really nice to have an even keeled tone that people can listen to, to guide them through. So I appreciate that. I guess we're lucky that we didn't really have a winter, so this money is timely to be used. So I do, I do want to put forward a motion to approve. And on that motion, I guess, as we anticipate the further needs, you know, we keep being told through various sources that this is going to get a lot worse. Are there any anticipated further costs that we should be considering?
Through you, Madam President. Yeah, through you, Madam President, absolutely, Counselor. And again, as I mentioned, we view this, the mayor views this as a first step. We fully anticipate to be back before the body with additional appropriation requests as we go forward. Our concern right now, and I don't want to sound flip about it, but our concern is the safety and the well-being of the people of this city. And we'll, we'll figure out the money. We're not going to not do something at this point in time that is necessary based upon the money. City is in excellent financial condition. We are prepared to weather a storm, and it's going to be quite a storm when we're all said and done here. But we fully anticipate that the costs needed to respond the way we have been to date and the way we will need to be in the coming weeks and months are going to escalate. We're prepared for that. We're starting to work through some analysis on that and what we think we may need. But again, it's, sometimes we don't know what we don't know. But our commitment to your body, Counselor, and to this body is to keep you informed and part of the process every step of the way and take it as it comes. But I absolutely 100% expect to be back before this body with additional appropriation requests. Thankfully, we do have some additional snow and ice money, knock on wood, that would be remaining after this $500,000. That is a source. We still have some available free cash, and we also have some other sources. But, you know, we're taking a hard look at everything. But just to repeat, that the health and safety and strength of this community is, is the job right now, not unlike it was in 2015 and the floods of 2018 and the floods of 2010. Our concern right now is, is, is doing everything we possibly can to respond to this event. And we know we can manage the money part of it.
Yeah. And I know, in speaking with Mrs. O'Connor, that we've got about a million in the snow and ice deficit. And I know that this is, what we're doing today is coming from a recommendation from the Department, the State's Department of Revenue, to set aside some funds. So this is being very responsible in handling this. So again, thank you. Thank you, my colleagues. Thank you, Council President, for setting this up and motion to approve.
Thank you, Counselor. So we have a motion to approve, but I have three other colleagues who have mentioned that they wanted to speak. And so Counselor Mahoney will go to you next, and then to Counselor Crowell, and then Counselor Devana. Counselor Mahoney?
Thank you. So through you, Madam Chair, to Mr. Walker, I just have a couple of questions. If we could just define it, there's, I've been getting a lot, I think we've all been getting a lot of questions about the hospital, and we've answered that. But one of the other questions that I'm getting a lot of is about essential workers and what the definition of essential workers are, mostly because we've just had the, you know, the nail salons and hairdressers and barber shops and all those places shut down. But I've been asked other questions in regards to what is the definition of essential workers or essential things that are open. So if we could just clarify that?
Sure. We're not on a footing of what's essential versus non-essential. We're taking it step by step as the issues come, based upon the guidance from the state and federal leaders. It was clear to us, I'll just use the most recent example of the personal care businesses. That's one that has not been statewide yet. We do think it's going there. But that's one based upon the recommendations of Governor Baker in terms of social distancing, based upon CDC's recommendations, based upon the recommendation of the health commissioner, who felt it was appropriate that you just can't operate these businesses, hair salons, nail salons, massage parlors, without being in very close contact with another person for an extended period of time, that that was the appropriate decision to do. So we're going step by step through this and working through it. We're not making a universal declaration, but it continues to draw down and we continue to take a lot of guidance from the state and federal level.
And that's typically what I've been telling people, is a lot of the things that we're doing is being, we're following the lead of the state in regards to what's happening in the state so that we're, I believe that we're trying to manage the best we can with our neighboring partners and our neighboring towns and then throughout the state. The other question that I had is, I know that when we're talking about this appropriation, it's for protective gear. And so for, when we talk about our essential works and we talk about our emergency management, do we have, is this protective gear also going to be used for any of the, you know, DPW or any of the other? Just want to clarify. So if we could go, I realize first, first and foremost, the first responders are the most important, and it's very tricky for those people, and I'm very concerned about them. And there's other people too that are working in the city. So if we could just expand a little bit more on some of those?
Sure. The protective gear we're buying, obviously, it will go a little bit more heavy to the police department because the fire department has some material that they can use. They have masks and they have breathing equipment. So there's a lot going to the PD out of these uniforms. I have the numbers on here. But I'm not seeing them at the moment, but there is absolutely a contingent, a piece of these. They're called the XRT ensemble. They include masks, gloves, and a full uniform. We are going to be dedicating a portion of the allotment that we do purchase to the DPW because they are, and it doesn't get mentioned often enough, and it's a good point, Counselor. Our DPW is absolutely, they are absolutely out there on the front lines. They get called to emergencies. They can't not show up if someone's sewer backs up or we have a major issue, a major infrastructure issue. So yet we're absolutely cognizant of that. We understand that. And a piece of this purchase will absolutely be dedicated to the DPW.
The other question that I had, and this is just, this is, you know, during the day, I'm, I'm a virtual worker now, so I'm working from home during the day, and there's a lot of comparisons of things that are going on. When it comes to with the police department, are the police, are they currently actively breaking up any crowds of kids or any things that are, that are happening? Because I know that that's, you know, social distancing is a, is a big thing. And I'm just curious to know how we're, like that. Other towns in the community seem to be doing that. Just wonder.
As you know, the playgrounds are closed, parks are open. So we want to encourage folks to get outside, a safe distance away from each other. But to get outside, take a walk, use the passive open spaces. Playgrounds are closed. They have been marked and signed. And we are asking the police department to try to enforce that as best they can. That's, it's a little bit tricky. We have had a couple of incidents where large groups of young people have gathered in certain areas, and we have asked the police to try to break those up. So we are cognizant of that. And yes, the police department is aware and they have done what they can to prevent that. But part of that is an education thing, too.
I understand.
Education that the parents need to know and the public needs to know that this is, this is serious. And I know it's difficult as well, that there's a flip side to that argument, that, you know, the kids are home all day and they're going to be home for a while. And it's understandable that they would want to get out and go hang out with their friends and be outside of the house for as long as they possibly can. But we just need, as a, as a community, to continue to press upon everyone that these regulations aren't a joke. This is serious.
I think I brought it up because I was, you know, in, I have the issue in my own house, Chris. You know, I have, I have, I have a 17-year-old, so I know exactly how hard this is. But I know in other communities, through coworkers of mine, the police are separating. They were just playing lacrosse on field and they were sent home in other, other towns. And, and the parents weren't even aware of it. So once they were aware of the seriousness, it's, it's, it's something that, it's through education. Which brings me to the, I have two more questions. The mobile site, you know, in the hopes that we'll be able to have that up and operational, do you think that will be at Quincy Hospital? Or do you think it could be at E and T here if you're not sure?
At this point in time, the site that we've selected is the one we would most like to see, that's most viable, at least in our opinion right now, would be Quincy Medical Center. But that certainly could change. Again, you know, this is not anything that's happening tomorrow. As you know, it's a shortage of swabs, there's a shortage of tests, the shortage is all over the place. So I don't know at what point, you know, anyone's going to be ready to pull the trigger for another mobile site. There are a couple in the area already. So we're working through it and we'll, we'll be ready when that, when that call comes and we're in contact with our partners every day. When the call comes to go, we'll, we'll be ready. We have the tent ready to be purchased as soon as the trigger is pulled.
And I think that's the most important point for people to know is that being ready as opposed to being reactive, which is what I think we're, we're all catching up to, is probably the best, best advantage that we have in regards to the issue that we're going through. Is Ally, I know, I never know how to say his name, is Ally's, is it?
Lehman.
Is he, is, is he working on the mobile, the mobile site?
He is. He's actively engaged with MIMA and FEMA on, on a piece of that. And he's actively engaged in obtaining some of the emergency, the personal protective gear that we've been able to get so far. Ally's really been working on, working hard on that piece of it. But he is involved in the discussions we have relative to the potential mobile testing site. But again, the city, and any mobile testing site, the city's committing to provide the infrastructure. But it's not like the city has the capability to actually operate a mobile testing site. We can't have our public health nurses being the actual manning the station. We need the staff and the expertise and the equipment of the major medical providers of the federal government to come in and be part of that.
No, I absolutely agree with that. It's just we have, we do have the emergency department. And we've, I've heard, I mean, Ruth Jones is doing a great job. I've been on the phone with her and I know that, I know that she's underneath enormous pressure and so are police and fire. I just want to make sure that we're actively engaging and we're having active participatory conversations with, with our, our emergency management person. Yeah, the last question that I have is regards to the 911, reverse 911 that we operate here in the city of Quincy. Have we used that at all to alert the public of any of the things that we've gone on last week?
Yes. Actually, tonight, the mayor will be sending out a call via that system, basically to provide everyone who maybe doesn't have internet, have social media, isn't on social media, doesn't have a wide variety of media to find their news from the local government, to lay out all the options that folks have for information.
So we haven't done any, that hasn't been used yet, has it?
It has not.
How many times have we used that so far?
Probably, you could probably count them on one hand because, in terms of, in terms of a citywide, a citywide call, we have used it in smaller batches for smaller issues that may relate to a particular neighborhood, that may relate to a particular project. But we've been very judicious in how we want to use that because frankly, people don't love it.
Yeah.
And we want to be very careful that when we do use it, it is an actual emergency. So even the mayor, from our perspective during this emergency, we're going to use that sparingly. And we're going to use it in a way that directs people to a place where they can get as much information that's available to them.
I think it's just a tool that we have, and I, I know that this, that the, we've been changing rapidly in the last week. So just, just less than a week ago, you know, our social distancing and our crowds were up to 250 and now we're down to, you know, basically everybody working from home with essential workers and essential shops being shut down. So it's just, it's kind of amazing how fast things have changed in a week. And I, I do know that there's, you know, people who are not being able to get the information to them. Some of them are mostly seniors. They don't have, they're not using the internet. They might have cable, but they're, they're not as. They might have cable, but they're, they're not as, and they're, and they're getting isolated. So it's important that they know that what's going on. I know QATV is, is closed down, but there's, but you're using that as a tool as well to provide information. But I just wanted to make sure that there is a way that we, if we need to, that we can engage with the public with the 911. So I want to thank you, Chris. I know that everybody's been working really, really hard. It is, you know, it's, you can't just people bear with this stuff and be rational about how we approach it, but we all play a part in it and families at home, you know, really understanding that this is, this is the way we get past it is to be able to actually follow some of the rules. And they do fail draconian it sometimes, but it's important that we're, we're following those rules so that we can avoid the spread. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. We're going to go to Counselor Kroll, then DeBona and then Harris. Counselor Kroll?
Thank you, Madam President. Appreciate you pulling this meeting together and my sort of line of questioning or thoughts has essentially been covered. But, you know, to kind of reiterate the, not the obvious, but there's been a tremendous amount of work being done within local government. Again, I just sitting here kind of watching this unfold has, has really been, really been interesting. And, you know, Mr. Walker, obviously the mayor, and, and the staff up there at City Hall, have been doing, you know, doing some things to try to make an impact in people's lives, most notably. And people have reached out to me on this, what transpired the other day with the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, to really kind of create an opportunity for folks who, you know, who couldn't prepare essentially to, you know, not go to work the next day. But I think when I contemplate local government and sort of where we're at in a time of crisis, we really have an opportunity to step up and deliver service. And I feel like that's happening and, you know, with conversations that are taking place here tonight will continue to happen. Chris, if you don't mind, I'm just kind of curious, you know, I know Counselor Palmucci had mentioned it. I've been spending a lot of time with, you know, my constituency, particularly senior buildings. What's been the, the level of dialogue between the administration and Quincy Housing Authority?
They've been with us pretty much every step of the way. Director Marathus has been involved in a number of meetings with Agda, the city side department heads. He's been in contact with Commissioner Jones. There's been information distributed within the Quincy housing facilities. We continue to work together, you know, obviously understanding a little bit of a separation of duties there, but we absolutely understand that that's a major component of protecting the health and welfare of the public. So we've been in constant contact with Jim. We can plan to continue to be so.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. And I'd also caught up with Jim and obviously hearing it through residents. I think it's important to, you know, take, again, there's so many people that are working around the clock to combat this, this issue. But Jim Marathus and his team have certainly been standouts in the, in the high density, you know, senior type buildings going and disinfecting the hallways and the elevators. I'm getting this feedback from residents. So, you know, I know that they're working as hard as humanly possible to keep things, keep things safe. And I did hear it mentioned here as well. My understanding as of yesterday at least was Meals on Wheels was still fully operational. Just this kind of a sidebar conversation. And I guess my final thing, Counselor Mahoney touched on, I was wondering more about the sighting of the, the actual tent. Think you covered that. But when you think about resources, we're, we're pretty much reliant on this point or at this point from literally the other stakeholders in government, i.e. the federal and state, right? Because I mean, I look just as a, as a local consumer, you know, some of the, the other shops, you know, the Walmarts of the world or even some of the supermarkets and it's just nothing to be had. So I'm assuming that they're a supplier at this point. Chris?
Well, I'm sorry, Counselor, you just repeat the question?
No, just for more like the sanitary items, you know.
Yeah, we've done, we are scratching and clawing as much as we can get. We have contact with all the supermarket outlets and some other sources. Helen Murphy's been running that operation from our office. She's been in touch with these, with folks on a daily basis, getting what we can get. Obviously, there's a shortage of a lot of this stuff in a lot of areas. Commissioner Hines had some great foresight. He had purchased a number of disinfectant sprayer machines that we have a lot of material for. And that's been a real godsend in terms of keeping the public buildings disinfected and the firehouses disinfected, the police station disinfected. Basically, it's, it's, it's an air spray, you just go into a room. To my knowledge, again, I'm an expert on this, you go into a room, you spray it, you get out, you're done. And it's, the room is disinfected. So we have a number of those machines available. We got them recently, just before, I think, or in the timeframe that this, this happened. So we've been really fortunate on that end. So we're okay on maintaining the public building piece and making sure that any facility that we have people in at any given time is thoroughly disinfected at least once a day. The stuff we're having issues with, obviously like everyone else, is the wipes, the sanitizer, the gloves and those sorts of things that we want to be able to give our boots on the ground. So, you know, the guys that are at DPW so they can wipe down their truck every day. The guys at the PD so they can wipe down the cruisers. We're, we're okay, we've got some of that stuff, but we are definitely reaching a point where it's, it's, it's going to be an issue.
Thank you, thank you for sharing that, Chris. And again, kudos to the, to the mayor and his team and really everybody on this line. I think we're all, you know, trying to put our best foot forward at a time of, in a time of need and deliver a service to our constituency. I'm looking forward to supporting the measure here this evening. And again, would encourage people to kind of follow the protocol that's been laid out there as to what to and not to do publicly and, you know, just be safe. So thank you again, Madam President. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor. So we're going to go to Counselor DeBona, then Counselor Harris and then Counselor McCarthy. Counselor DeBona?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to, I want to thank you for putting this all together and working with the administration, obviously, as the council president. I want to thank the mayor, Mr. Walker, Ruth Jones, first responders, everyone who was at City Hall and all the workers still out there working every day. You know, they're out there working hard. So, you know, a lot of the, I want to thank my colleagues for, for asking a lot of the questions that I kind of had, the disinfecting part of it. Just to take it a little step further and maybe through you to, to Mr. Walker. How, how do we really tackle some of the schools that obviously we're not having any more of a few school? How do we disinfect? Were you going to be using those spraying devices to disinfect that or the playgrounds as well? And how do you, how do we think we're going to go about that?
Absolutely, Counselor. As even though the school is not necessarily still being regularly disinfected, if not every day, then every other day, the custodial staff is, is working. So I believe it's happening every day. And as we get closer to the potential of a reopening, that is certainly going to be amped up through, through a different level. Having the school closed provides a benefit to some degree because we can allocate some resources to different places. But under no circumstances will any child be allowed back into a school building that has not been federally disinfected.
I thank you, I thank you for that because I'm getting a few questions just on that. And then prior to this whole situation happening, you know, just what we're going to do about that. So I appreciate that. Obviously, the playgrounds, I know they're outdoor, but are we looking to spray down that area? You know, obviously they're taped up right now, but.
Yeah, it's a really good point, Counselor. I think absolutely, again, when we're ready to pull the trigger, to take those signs down and take the tape off, absolutely we'll have crews in to provide some disinfecting of those, that equipment.
Just a little step further on our nonprofits, is any of the, I know we had the, two years ago, we dealt with a lot of the flooding and a couple of years ago with the snow. Is there any nonprofits that are helping out, like Salvation Army, Q cap? Anybody that, resources that the public can use to go to?
Through, through you, absolutely, Counselor. They are, they are fully engaged. Our, our nonprofit community is doing tremendous work. Now, keep in mind, they're struggling now as well. So part of our goal is going to be try to help them, help them help others to do their job. We've got to keep that in mind. The food pantries are dramatically low. There's a lot of other issues going on, but the agencies are actively engaged on this right now. The Affordable Housing Trust money that the mayor sought this week, it was approved. There will be active nonprofit involvement in that. The Chamber of Commerce will probably lead at least a good deal of that effort. But Quincy Community Action Programs is at the table as they always are, as are a number of other places. And, you know, really, I don't want to repeat myself, but I guess I will. We've got to be providing the help to them now. They really need some assistance, particularly father bills, the food pantries, interface, social services. Those areas really, really need our help as well.
I know we obviously, obviously have a situation where we, you all right, Chris?
Oh, sorry, I just shook my head at someone that walked in the office.
Okay, just, just on the measures of helping out, how, how can we help out? How can the public help out as we, we know we got social distancing? But how do, how do, you know, other people want to help out in their cause? What, what can we do right now, today?
Through you, as, as we always say when it comes to these things, I believe those agencies, first and foremost, it's, it's money. Cash donations to any of those groups, I'm sure will certainly be appreciated. And some of the food pantries, I'm sure they'd be happy to accept non-perishable items. They do that on a regular basis. Those are the sorts of things I'm sure they're looking for, Counselor.
Thank you, yeah. I had a couple of churches reach out to me that wanted to help and I actually got them in line with the Germantown Neighborhood Center, which is great. Lastly, my last question is the mask and protective equipment and gear. I know that when, when the Governor Charlie Baker was trying to bid for them, he had a hard time getting the bid. Do we have a situation where we can purchase these with the demand or how is that going to happen?
We do, we have a full force. We've been working with Brewster Ambulance. They have a source that has been able, they've been able to purchase a number of these outfits from this group and we're working directly with them now. So we have that ready to be on order as soon if this appropriation is approved.
And you know, one more question real quick, the testing we talked about, I know some of my colleagues talked about the testing. Is there going to be a measure where it'll allow the testing or we have to pay for it out of pocket? How, how is that going to go? I know we're getting ahead of ourselves, but these are the questions that I'm getting from.
I'm sorry, I, I wouldn't be able to answer how the testing would work if people, I, what I, what I think we can make an assumption for is that any testing facility, even a drive-through type, is not going to be the kind where anybody who just feels like they have a cough or a cold, that they're going to go up there and get a test. I don't believe that will at any point be advisable. I know some people would like to see that happen or, or feel nervous or have anxiety about that. So they want to have a test. It's not under any circumstances going to be a, a testing free for all. There will always be criteria that people will need to have a test done.
Thank you, that's very important, what you just said, and I appreciate that the public knows. Thank you, thank you, Madam President, for doing this. Thank you, Mr. Walker, for all your hard work. And I know we'll have more discussions about this as time goes along and we find out more information. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Next, we're going to go to Counselor Harris.
Thank you, thank you, Madam President, for, again, putting this together and the mayor in his office and Mr. Walker and my, my colleagues for coming on to reemphasize what Mr. Walker just said about, about the, the not everybody will be tested. I'll give you a really good example of that is this morning I was at Boston Medical Center to be checked and they didn't test me, which I was really thrilled about. I had, I had several of the symptoms, high fever yesterday and, and normally I don't, I wouldn't run to the hospital, but I had several, but I'm going to be home for about 10 days, which is good. But because we're still, I'm still, my, my work is still, is still working. But one of the things with this, the possibility of having a test area would, would make it so much easier than folks having to go to South Shore or go to Boston Medical Center, which is, is a difficult, difficult place under, under any circumstance to get through. So I was even in a conversation about a, about a zoning board issue with one of, one of my constituents this afternoon. And, and it was discussed and it's something that really would, would actually probably put some folks at ease that we have something locally like this going on. So I commend, I commend the administration. And I don't believe I heard a second, and if there wasn't a second, I second the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. So we have a motion made to approve by Counselor Kane, second by Counselor Harris. I have three other colleagues who would like to speak, so I'm going to just go to them first before we do a roll call. Counselor McCarthy?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Just two quick questions to Chris through you. Mr. Walker, in regards to first responders and not necessary police and fire, but DPW and natural resources, has any of their everyday duties changed or is it business as usual?
It's not business as usual through you, Madam President. It's not business as usual. All the department heads are working with the workers to determine what is safe to do and what is not safe to do.
Right.
There's definitely fewer folks that are working right now and we're going to continue to keep an eye on that. We've been adamant, the department heads have been adamant that if they cannot keep within the guidelines that have been set forward, they are, they are not to be working.
Okay, I, I thought that was going to be the answer. My second question, Chris, is, and I assume you and President Liang will probably get us either a message out or a bye message every week on the status of what's going on?
Sure, you know, through you, Madam President, what I've been trying to do with, with this group is every day send at least a quick note that what the, what the top headline is. We can certainly beef that up going forward to provide a fuller detail of exactly what's going on. We're happy to do that, Counselor.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, President.
Thank you, Counselor. Next, we're going to go to Counselor Feller and Counselor Feller?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to thank a lot of the city members, I've been calling them on totally other issues. So it's amazing that there's still things going on around the city, some on zoning issues, some with the building. So I appreciate those professionals being there. And also everyone should realize that they're not going to run out somewhere where they're going to endanger themselves. So I've just said, told people that we'll make calls, we'll work on the internet, we'll work like that. And I encourage everyone to use online. I think doing a, doing a roll call, particularly to the senior population, is a great way to do it because some of them don't have cable, some of them don't have access to internet. So I think I like the reports, Mayor's known, I've been putting them out on my social media and Facebook. And I think those, those efforts should continue. I think the most important thing we can do is continue to let people know what's going on. This is a very difficult time for people. And if you need more money, I'd be more than happy to go on a conference call anytime that we need, that we need to sit down and go over this. We're lucky, we had a good winter and I highly support the measure that is before us. And call me anytime if you need me, I'm more than willing to go on and do a video conference.
Thank you, Counselor, I appreciate that. And Counselor Mahoney, you had a follow-up question?
I did, I had a quick follow-up question. One of the questions that I had and, and I just want to be sensitive to this is that the ADA requirements and then also for hearing impaired people, I know that it's difficult and I know that when we're putting things out on QATV, we're, we're having it written out. But any, any meetings or any video conferencing that we're having, anything that we're doing, anyway, we can make sure that people that have hearing impairment are able to participate in this. It's very important that we're able to communicate to everybody in our community. And then on the other side of that, I'm also, and I, I know that we're doing our best in this situation, but also for the non-English speaking residents of the city of Quincy, making sure that we're communicating and making sure that they're having their questions answered too. I, I can't imagine what it would be like to not be able to either hear or see or have physical, physical capabilities that would prevent me from being able to be able to understand what's happening in my community and how to keep myself. I want to make sure that we're doing that. And then also I just want to, for the people at home to understand that, you know, this is an important step that we're doing to participate and be able to best serve our community by separating this account and creating. to participate and, and be able to best serve our community by separating this account and creating a COVID-19 account for, um, the city of Quincy. We'll be able to establish a financial pattern of what we're spending so that if there is a reimbursement from the federal government at some point, we'll be able to, um, be reimbursed. And I do anticipate, um, and I, I hope I'm wrong about this, but I do anticipate that this is going to be the first of many conversations that we do have. Um, you know, I, I don't, I don't like to, to follow fear tactics, but if you're watching what's happening throughout the global economy and the global world, you are seeing some, um, pretty horrific things happening and we are trying to stay ahead of it. And I, I, I do appreciate having this video conference call and also being able to participate and knowing what's happening in our community and make sure people at home know that they can call. Not only the mayor's office, but that all of us are, 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 are very much capable of taking their calls and trying to, to establish conversations. My one last question for you, Chris, and it's, um, it's really about, um, abatements. I know that we had, um, a filing for April 1st for, um, tax abatements and some seniors were calling about that too, so I'm hoping we'll have some answers for that as well. Thank you.
Through, through you, Madam President, we, um, based upon your request, Counselor, we've reached out to the state. That's a state, that's a state decision.
Yeah, we do realize that it's, it's important that we, that we are, are on top of that too. It's more.
As, as of right now, they haven't, uh, given us any guidance. They have not said we'll, we'll extend that, but we're going to keep on that and I'll let you know what's going to be here.
Okay. And as far as, um, as far as ADA requirements and translation, where do we stand on that?
Well, I can speak from the city's perspective that, uh, every video that we post, uh, is included a full transcript, uh, in it. Um, from, so that, I believe, and also the YouTube version of videos that we post has a closed caption option. Uh, the video conferencing, I, I can't speak to, this is our first time doing this, so that's a, that's a different, a different animal.
Great, well, thank you very much, I do appreciate that. And again, establishing the separate, separate account, I think, is a, is a, is a way to keep moving that we're doing so that when hopefully we are past all of this, um, we can work together with the federal government to make sure that we're all intact as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Um, Counselor Palmuji, I believe I saw your hand up?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, Chris, uh, two questions. Um, first, as you referenced in your, uh, opening remarks, that there are accounts that we can deficit spend as it relates to, uh, the public health crisis. What, what are those accounts?
Uh, basically, I, I believe, Counselor, I'm not 100% sure, but I believe it's anything, uh, within the budget itself. Um, that in the event of an emergency, state law and the Department of Revenue, uh, gives the city the authority to deficit spend like we would essentially in a snow emergency, under snow and ice, uh, virtually anything that we determine that is part of the response to this emergency and the emergency spending is required, uh, that we can deficit spend within those accounts. And I'm sure the auditor will correct me if I'm wrong about that.
I will correct you if you're wrong, but you are correct.
Okay, all right, well, that's, that's good to know. Um, and then my second question is the Affordable Housing Trust program. Uh, for assistance to the, uh, folks who are struggling financially, specifically from the hospitality industry. Uh, are there going to be guidelines and information put out from the city as to how folks can access that? I mean, I haven't seen anything yet, I know it's, it just happened, but, um, what are the plans for implementation of that program?
Yeah, through you, Madam President, we've had, uh, I believe at this point, three meetings, uh, on that very subject. Uh, it is still being developed. Uh, we will absolutely have guidelines. Uh, we absolutely will have a application process, uh, to ensure that, that it's, uh, the money is filtered out appropriately. Uh, the chamber is actively engaged with us on it. Uh, QCAP is going to be part of that process to assist, uh, because they have, um, some great experience in, in dealing with that. Um, I don't know what it wants to look like exactly at the moment. We do believe we have the, at least a little bit of benefit of some time on that, Counselor, because, um, if you just take it hypothetically, um, folks were most likely employed at March 1st when they paid their last rent check, uh, and their next rent check is not due until April 1st. Um, so we have, we have days, I'm not going to say weeks. We have days to really, uh, flesh this out, make sure it's fleshed out appropriately, uh, and it can do what, what we really want it to do.
Okay, no, and I, and I, I know it's, you know, everything's still, um, a moving target. I just, uh, I was just curious about it. I, in thinking about how that would, um, be applied.
Yeah, I mean, what you've got to keep in mind through you, it's, it's what we have to be careful of and I certainly don't want to disparage anyone that, uh, takes a couple of shifts during the week as a bartender, um, and has a full-time job. So there's, there's one thing that we know. If you have a full-time job that's not tending bar, waiting, um, you would not be eligible for this. Um, that's, that's one piece of it, that we're already, that we know we're going to have to be, be cognizant of it as we go forward.
I mean, I, the Affordable Housing Trust as well, well, they will oversee the program, right? Because it's Affordable Housing Trust money, so Planning Department potentially.
Correct, correct. Mr. Fabrizio and Mr. Fatsis, uh, will have, uh, definite roles to play in this.
And I don't want to get into the weeds in it, but I mean, there are, the, there's, the state-level housing programs have, um, obviously income criteria, but the, but they also, there's other programs that have, um, asset criteria. So obviously if someone, you know, has a million dollars in stocks, but, you know, is a full-time bartender, I, I think there are other people who perhaps are more, um, in a more vulnerable situation that could use the money. And also, and when I was thinking about how the, the program would be implemented, implemented, I wanted to make sure that, I mean, I think the larger property owners, you know, the, uh, the Avalon Bays of the world, the, the corporate entities and some of the larger property owners in the city, I suspect they'll be, um, they'll be all over this in terms of learning about how their tenants can get assistance and, and, and access this. But I want to make sure that, um, you know, the, the little old lady who owns a two-family and, um, has one tenant, you know, is in some massive landlord, uh, property on, owner in the city, that, that those folks, you know, that landlord and that tenant may be struggling because of this. Um, you know, they have as much access and as much knowledge about, information about this program so that we're, you know, we're helping the folks who, who perhaps need it the most. So I mean, and I'm sure we'll all help when that information is available through all of our social media and, um, communication channels. I'm sure that the entire council would like to put that information out there. So that's all I had. Thanks, Chris, thanks, um, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay, um, just before we wrap up, I just wanted to do another check around to all of my colleagues. If anybody else, um, has anything else they'd like to say or ask. Okay, with that, um, Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Counselor Kane?
Yes.
Counselor Crowell?
Yes.
Counselor DeBona?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney?
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor Palmuji?
Yes.
Counselor Phelan?
Yes.
Pres- President Liang?
Yes.
Nine members.
Okay, the motion passes. Um, before we move out of this, um, if you all have me, I just want to stop and truly think for a moment. Um, everyone who's been working so hard the last two weeks to make sure that we're communicating with all of our residents. I mean, yes, everything's coming to a stop, but this is the time when we all can't stop and we need to keep looking forward, um, and working together. And the collaborative efforts with the number of people who are actively trying to solve this issue and, and, you know, service our residents, um, you know, go beyond this city. And so to be able to rely on all of you to bring this together specifically tonight through this medium and productively, you know, have a conversation and get this out there, I can't thank all of you enough. Um, QA TV is taping this, they're going to be posting it, uh, with closed captions. So I want to thank Mark Rosby and the team over there for that. Um, I see that Kathy Hubley, the school committee member, is on this call as well and listening in. Um, they cannot participate because of, you know, this is how it's going tonight, but I do want to thank her, um, and everyone over at the school committee and the superintendent and the schools for handling, uh, what they have with the schools and shutting down and making sure that we're still providing a much-needed meal to the students. I also want to thank everyone at the administration, between Ruth, Chris Walker, uh, the mayor especially. You know, we have been talking pretty frequently, uh, multiple times a day and between, you know, communicating with the business owners, with, uh, residents, with the workers and providing services to them, um, in collaboration with a lot of the nonprofit organizations like Cori, BCNC, ACDC, to get things translated and having Betty Yao get out there, get on QTV, QA TV and getting things translated as well. It's so important right now when there's an influx of information that is so fluid, that we are providing information, um, that is accurate and, and that folks can really rely on. So, um, I, again, cannot thank all of my colleagues enough. You guys are managing not only this role, which is so important, but every single one of you have a day job that you're also trying to manage at this time of, um, you know, the pandemic that we have in these unprecedented times. You are making this a priority and I do appreciate every single one of you and your commitment to staying in touch and getting the information out to your constituents. Um, and last but not least, of course, is everyone in the council office. You know, Jen, Sue, Kathy, Nikki, um, you know, every single one of you have been phenomenal in getting notices out to residents with meetings when they had to get rescheduled or postponed or canceled. Um, I don't know how you guys do it. I think we all say that, uh, pretty frequently, but I know from every single one of us, we cannot thank you enough for all that you do. So with that, um, thank every single one of you for doing this, for jumping on. Uh, we are, again, canceling the March 23rd meeting, but as of right now, we are going to move forward with the April 6th council meeting. Most likely it will be through this medium again, um, but we will convene and discuss that and confirm, uh, before April 6th. So with that, uh, thank you all again, and do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, I'll have a good night, remember to wash your hands.
Bye.
Good night, everyone.
Bye, everybody.
Bye. Bye-bye.